I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, December 16th, nine days before Santa Claus, Christmas. Welcome everyone. Tonight, we've got Reverend Stephen Lyle of Smyrna First United Methodist Church. We also got a special recognition for him. So after you get through giving the invocation and place the flag, he's got some of his, you're gonna bring them up, okay, associate pastor. So Steve, if you'll come forward and give the invocation and also lead us in place to the flag, that'd be great. Everybody rise.
Let's pray. Lord, we're thankful for tonight, and thank you so much for blessing us with a beautiful country where we can, at this time of the year, celebrate all of our faiths. And we come tonight thanking you for blessing us with this nation with freedom, freedom to travel, freedom to pursue our faith. And we ask tonight that you would bless this council meeting, bless what they do. And Lord, this is your country, this is your property, this all belongs to you. And we pray that you would help each person that governs, govern wisely and with your best interest at heart. And we thank you for all the blessings that you're giving to us, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, if you'll just stay right there, I know you've got Barbara Hatchell and Joey Hatchell.
I just have Barbara.
Okay. Joey, Joey, you can go get the car warmed up and bring it around front.
He's our bodyguard, and we're in trouble.
I'm gonna ask the council member, Charles Welch, read a proclamation recognizing 175 years of existence in our community of the First United Methodist Church.
Thank you, Max. This is a long one. We thank y'all for coming out this evening. Whereas the Smyrna First United Methodist Church is celebrating 175 years of serving Christ and the community, and whereas the Smyrna First United Methodist Church traces its roots back to 1833, when Methodist pioneers established a meeting place near the present day downtown Smyrna area, in which traveling ministers would come and hold worship services. A brush arbor under which people would gather for these services was built near a freshwater spring that ran through the area. And whereas through these generations that a fellowship of believers began to emerge, and around the year 1838, this fellowship would become the Smyrna Episcopal Methodist Church, and later renamed the Smyrna First United Methodist Church. And whereas it is believed that in 1846, a log cabin which was built on this site and the Methodist congregation established the Smyrna Methodist, Smyrna Memorial Cemetery as well. And whereas the church expanded its facilities in 1911 and again in 1968. And whereas the city of Smyrna would like to join the Smyrna First United Methodist Church in celebrating and recognizing their 175 years of service now, therefore, I, A. Max Bacon, Mayor of the City of Smyrna, do hereby proclaim December 16th, 2013, as a day of recognition for Smyrna First United Methodist Church. Further on behalf of all the citizens of Smyrna, we look forward with the greater members of Smyrna First United Methodist Church to an even brighter future.
Rachel Leis. Joey, would you move down that way some?
Thank you.
Steve, if you'll say something, I know, if you'd like to say anything. I always tell folks, if they're looking for a church to go to, that if you're new into town...
You're doing a good job, keep going.
And I do that, but Corky's been more than I have. This is my church, it has been for years, but Corky's been a better member. Susan isn't, is Wade too? Wade, yeah?
Yeah.
Anybody else want to claim the church, First Methodist?
If you don't have one, we'll love to have you.
There you go.
We're very honored. This is a great honor for our church, and it's just great to be able to serve in our community. And thank you for this, this is very special. And we will keep this and probably frame it, I'm sure, and put it in the closet.
Thank you so much.
We'll put it on the wall in the sanctuary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Agenda changes, we don't have any, I don't believe. Mayor overboard, we've already done that. Item four is land issues, zoning and annexations. We have a couple items on there. A is the, is 2013-447, approval of an amendment to the Belmont Hills Redevelopment Project TAD agreement. Mr. Taylor, will you please get the background on that, please?
Certainly, Your Honor. Back in 2008, the city of Smyrna entered into a development agreement to cover the TAD that was being proposed for the Belmont Hills Shopping Center project. City staff was recently approached by Halpern Enterprises to amend this agreement in consideration of changing conditions since the agreement was adopted in 2008. Example of such conditions would be the sale of school property and the change in the economic environment since 2008. Also, there have been several zoning amendments to the plan that have occurred between 2008 and now. Among the various items that are being proposed, the change is to extend the project completion date to 2021, that was supposed to be from 2016, 2008 to 2016. Change the TAD base year from 2003 to 2013. Reduce the TAD reimbursement to $12,800,000, that's down from the original request of $23.5 million. Substitute new schedules to the agreement, eliminate the city's make-whole obligation, and also to eliminate compounding interest. This agreement has also been forwarded to the county for their approval, and so we are recommending approval, subject to the county's approval.
This, I'm not sure, is this a public hearing on this one? I'd personally like to ask that Jack Halpern or Steve West come up and... Well, no, I guess we need to get Ken Sudworth. Okay, good, we'll get these guys to come up to explain what we're doing and why we're doing it. There's been a lot of discussion about the TAD issue and the Johnquill and the Belmont Hills development, so.
Mayor and members of the council, thank you for the opportunity. Essentially, the world has changed since our development agreement was entered into five years ago. In some ways, good things have been happening. The New Smyrna Elementary School is one example of that. Although, in recognition of that, we have had to alter what was the master plan for the development. That property is obviously no longer on the tax rolls, and we've reduced the scope of what we had projected for our property as a result, consequently reducing the amount of money that we need for the infrastructure improvements that will be going into the project. We're thankful that there does seem to be some very positive momentum in terms of demand for the development to take place there. We have a portion of the property under contract to a home developer. It'll be for-sale housing going in on the first phase of the project. We're optimistic that 2014 will be the year that we will see vertical construction coming up from the site, and we're excited about what the future holds. We think that the amendment to the development agreement essentially brings the project into, well, defines it in accordance with what current reality is. What we haven't lost sight of was the initial vision for the property, which was articulated by this council and the citizens of Smyrna going back 10 years or more in terms of a mixed-use development that'll be a source of pride to the whole community. And we are optimistic that what will be forthcoming as a result of the amendment to the development agreement will be something that we will all be proud of.
Ted, do we have that, we saw, we had a picture upstairs that showed the Belmont Hills. Can you pull that up? Is that possible? Yeah. So we need to go upstairs? The TAD that we're talking about is sort of a different kind of TAD. We didn't issue bonds, it really falls all back on you and the development of a lot of property to bring in additional dollars before you get your money back, right? Or your portion of your money back.
Correct. In other words, we have to spend the money upfront ourselves, and we only get reimbursed if property values go up and property taxes go up within the TAD. So the risk is on us, there's no obligation on the part of the city, and if all goes well, the property will be reimbursed for the infrastructure improvements, and the property will be back on the tax rolls at greatly increased value in the years to come.
But the reality is that you sold a very valuable piece of property, a tax-rich property, to the school system, and we also sold part of our property to the school system going to convert the remainder of it to park. That comes off the tax rolls.
It is already, so our ability to get paid back has been diminished by the fact that approximately 20 acres is no longer taxable, so we, but that is part of the changed reality that we are prepared to deal with and are thankful that we can adjust our plans accordingly.
Scott, anything you want to, I know that if we approve this tonight, then the county, have they approved their portion of yet?
No, they haven't yet, but they will. They kind of wanted us to approve first, and then we'll go meet with the county and go through this. And this basically, as Jack said, is kind of bringing the current agreement to the current market. Lots happened since we originally did this, and one of the things they're doing is the infrastructure cost is actually going down from $23 million and change to 12.8. And then again, that only gets, that only gets repaid out of value created by the developer. No city money goes into that, no present city money at all is used to pay that back, no bonds have been done or anything. So the reason we need to do this now, one of the main reasons, is because they're getting ready to start the construction soon. Knock on wood.
Any prospects on the retail portion of that property?
We've had a lot of inquiries, but the reality is that the restaurants and retailers don't want to be sitting out there by themselves. So the fact that we will shortly have people living on the property and activity throughout the site will enable us to get started and complete the restaurant and retail portion of the development in the near future. We have obligated ourselves to, one of the residential developers, to in fact get started. It'll take us less time to build that portion of the project than it would the residential portion, so we can time it so that it's all completed at approximately the same time.
I know we all get asked the questions of what's going on in Belmont Hills, what's going on with Johnquill, and now folks know, so. Any other questions? This is, is this Mr. Nullwich? I believe it does say Nullwich. Mr. Nullwich?
It is, it is Mr. Nullwich. And this is the, you know, I explained to someone today, it's fairly straightforward. This isn't changing the zoning, it's not altering what's currently zoned, this is changing the TAD agreement, and it's making it much more in keeping with the property, since the property has changed, since the original TAD agreement was put into place. So knowing that this is very straightforward, you know, making it clear that this is not a zoning. At this time, I would like to go ahead and move to approve item 4A. This is item, it's 2013-447, this is approval of the amendment to the Belmont Hills Redevelopment Project TAD Agreement.
Second.
Motion second to approve this amendment to the Belmont Hills Redevelopment Project TAD Agreement. Any others? Mr. Lineker.
Your Honor, I'd just like to note for the public that we've worked with Jack Halpern and Steve West for probably 15 years now as an entity to redevelop Belmont Hills into, once again, the place that Smyrna will be most proud of. And they've worked with us, they've kept the faith, they've gone through economic ups and downs, they've stood by during the tough times, maintained true to the concepts, and been really wonderful people to work with. And, you know, during the holiday season, it's just appropriate to say thank you for, you know, working with us, for staying into your principles, and, you know, being the people that you are, and we know in the end, this is going to be a great development for Smyrna. I wish you luck.
Thank you. They can't go anywhere. Any other discussion? Have motion, all those in favor of motion, please vote. Approve 7-0. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas, happy holidays. Item B, under land issues, zoning and annexations, RES 2013-08, adoption of a resolution for a five-year, 2014 through 2018, update of livable centers initiative plan. Background, Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, this particular item dates back to 2003, when the city received a grant from the Atlanta Regional Commission to conduct a livable centers initiative study. This particular study was conducted in 2003 and was adopted by the mayor and council on January 20th, 2004. In order to keep this designation, the city has to submit updates to the LCI plan every five years. The first five-year update was for the period from 2008 to 2013, and was approved back in September 2008. This particular item is an update to cover 2014 to 2018, and staff does recommend approval.
This is Ms. Bluestein's committee. I don't know if she's going to turn it over to Ken Sudworth.
Mr. Sudworth, would you like to add anything to this?
I think you all understand what is going on, but I do have a short PowerPoint that I think is, would be beneficial to everyone in the audience. Let me bring this up. The LCI, which is the Livable Centers Initiative, consists of really five basic sections. The evaluation and appraisal report, the five-year update narrative, the report of accomplishments, the five-year action plan, and then the study area project map. Little bit hard to maybe see on the screen, but this is the project map. And basically, our, the eastern boundary is Cobb Parkway, the western boundary is South Cobb, the northern boundary is Windy Hill, and the southern boundary is Spring Concord Road. So that any project that's either on those perimeter roads or within those boundaries has the potential of being eligible for LCI funding, whether that is LCI study funds, which is normally the first step, or LCI implementation funds, which would be the second step. The purpose of the five-year update really is to maintain Smyrna's eligibility for the LCI program. Again, this is a program that we're not forced to be in, we choose to be in, we do. We had an LCI out here on Atlanta Road, and this is just following up to maintain that whole eligibility for us to use these funds in the future. Again, there's study funding for the LCI area, there's supplemental funding, there's special corridor funding, as well as the project implementation funding. You don't have to use any of these, you potentially could use all of those, depending on what type of project is actually recommended. Again, these areas can only be located in the approved LCI study, as I had mentioned before, with that map. All funding awards require at least a 20% match by the city, if not more. These are very competitive applications, so oftentimes, we do have to put more up just to make it a competitive bid. But again, as we've talked during our work session, this is not an application for funding. This is just a status update report. Now, Table A that you have lists the completed projects in the green. Projects that are partially, that are underway or partially completed are in yellow, and the projects that have not started or have been deemed irrelevant are highlighted in gray or the white with that. And then there's a notes column as well. Now, Table B, on the action plan, you know, it shows the projects that may, depending on our funding, may be implemented. Again, these projects then would be eligible for LCI implementation funds with a minimum of at least a 80/20 match. And as I have mentioned, the project itself is a media, I mean, is a metro-wide competition. It's very competitive, because there's only a limited amount of funds that are available. What are our next steps? That's sort of what we are here for tonight. Obviously, the passage of a resolution that you have regarding this issue tonight by this body, and then staff will submit it to the Atlanta Regional Commission for their review and approval. After all of that is done, that, you know, once it is approved, then future projects within that LCI area that we've just outlined would be eligible for funding under the LCI. Now, whether they would be funded, again, that gets into the competition aspect. What you have in front of you keeps us eligible, so it is really just a status report, an update report of where we are. And as Mr. Taylor stated, we started really in 2003 with the first update in 2008, so this is our second update that'll take us out another five years. Happy to answer any other questions, but that's what you're doing.
Any questions? Any questions of any council member? Ms. Bluestein?
Okay. Either they're just mesmerized, or I'm not sure what's going on. Okay, so there are no questions?
Let me ask this, is this considered a public hearing on this issue? Okay. 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 Ms. Bluestein?
Okay. Okay, well then, at this time, I would like to move that we adopt Resolution 2013-08, the adoption of the resolution for a five-year spanning 2014 through 2018, updated the livable centers initiative plan.
Have a motion and a second. Yep. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved 7-0. Thank you very much. Item five is privileges licenses. We do not have any. Item six is formal business. We've got a lot of appointees and reappointees. Item A is approval of Ward Two appointee to Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board, Lisa Castleberry. Term expires 12/31/2015. Ms. Bluestein?
Yes, and it is with great pleasure, and I think I see Mrs. Castleberry out in the audience. So I would, at this time, like to make a motion to approve Mrs. Castleberry for the Ward Two appointee to Keep Smyrna Beautiful, Lisa Castleberry. Her term will expire 12/31/2015. And Terry and I were talking, this will be the first time that we've had a mother-daughter. Her mom is Betty Williams, who is Ward Three, and now Lisa will be Ward Two. So I'd like to approve, make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. 7-0. Thank you very much. Item B, approval of Ward Two reappointment of Parks and Recreation Commission, John Cole. His term expires 12/31/2015. Ms. Bluestein?
Yes. Mr. Cole has been the appointee to the Parks and Recreations for the past two years, and he has graciously agreed to extend his term. So at this time, I'd like to move to appoint the Ward Two, to reappoint to Ward Two the Parks and Recreation Commission, John Cole, whose term will expire 12/31/2015.
Motion second to reappoint John Cole. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. One more. Let's approve 7-0. Next item is C, approval of Ward Two reappointment to Planning and Zoning Board, Ms. Dale Holmes. Term expires 12/31. It says 2015, yeah. Okay. Is that right? Oh, to expire 2015, okay. Ms. Bluestein?
Yes. Mrs. Holmes has graciously agreed to continue on the planning and zoning board, so at this time, I would like to make a motion to approve Ms. Dale Holmes, to reappoint her as the Ward Two rep to the planning and zoning board. Her term will expire 12/31/15.
Have a motion to reappoint Dale Holmes in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. 7-0. Item D is approval of Ward Three reappointment to Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board, Betty Williams. Ms. Nullwich?
Yes, Betty has been a phenomenal asset to the KSB board over the years. As Ms. Bluestein mentioned, we have a mother-daughter team now. I think that's going to be exciting, and I look forward to see how everyone works together to continue furthering the KSB mission. I am so grateful for her continued service to the city, and I would like to move now to approve item 2013-452, approval of the Ward Three reappointment to Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board. This is Betty Williams, and her term to expire December 31st, 2015.
Have a motion. Need a second?
Second.
A second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Let's approve 7-0. Approval of Ward Three appointee to Planning and Zoning Board, Stephen A. Kemp. Term expires 12/31/2015. Ms. Nullwich?
Yes, and the first thing I'd like to do is actually take a moment to thank and to commend Larry Jones for his work for the citizens of Ward Three. Larry was actually appointed by my predecessor, and he was gracious enough to continue serving the city on the P&amp;Z board while I learned the ropes. And things slowed down there in the recession a little bit, I think that won't come as a shock to everyone. And they've been ramping up now, and I would be remiss if I also didn't speak to the contributions that Larry's late wife, Jill Jones, made to the city of Smyrna and to the Williams Park community. She passed away in March of 2012, and it'd be easy to spend the rest of this meeting talking about Jill's contributions to the city. By all accounts, she was the heart and soul of the Williams Park community. Together, Larry and Jill were tireless in their efforts to build community and to give Williams Park a sincere sense of place. And again, I am so grateful for Larry's service during the six years that he's been my appointee, and for all of his service prior to my tenure. Larry and I had conversations several months ago about rotating off P&amp;Z, and around that time, I began talking to Ward Three resident Steve Kemp about the possibility of his serving on the P&amp;Z board. Steve is a residential architect. He has lived in the house that he built on Grady Street since 2006. Actually, one of the things he told me when I was getting to know him, and he and his wife were telling me about his home, is that he actually took some ideas and sort of design features that were used in the Village Green and in City Hall and in the library, and incorporated some of those aspects into his home, which I thought was really neat. He has an architecture firm, Kemp Hall Studios, and he's the recipient of a lot of recognitions and awards, but he's probably best known nationally for the 2012 HGTV Green home. He designed that down in Saranby, Georgia. I know that his perspective and his professional qualifications will be a great asset to the P&amp;Z board, and I'm so thankful that he is willing to serve the city in that capacity. So at this point, I would like to make a motion to approve item five, I'm sorry, 6E, which is 2013-453, approval of the Ward Three appointment to Planning and Zoning Board. It's Steve A. Kemp, a term to expire December 31st, 2015.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve 7-0. Approval of Ward Three reappointment to the... Approval of Ward 3 reappointment to the Housing Authority, Bill Strickland. Term to expire 12/31/2017. That's Ms. Nullwich also.
That's me. Where do you begin with Bill Strickland? He's a tremendous asset to the city. He knows the ins and outs of the Housing Authority. He keeps me straight on all Housing Authority issues, and for that, I am very grateful. He is also a council meeting regular. And that alone deserves recognition, and I am very grateful that he is continuing to serve our city as part of the Housing Authority. So at this point, I would like to move to approve item 6F, 2013-455, approval of the Ward 3 reappointment to the Housing Authority. I am reappointing Bill Strickland for a term to expire on December 31, 2017.
Second.
Motion and a second to reappoint Bill Strickland. Any discussion? Already voting. You already got five votes, six votes, seven votes. I haven't even called the question yet, so. That's approved, 7-0. Thank you very much. Approval of Ward 3 reappointment to Parks and Recreation Board, Liz Davis. Term to expire 12/31/2015. Ms. Nullwich?
Yes, last but by no means least for my Ward 3 appointments and reappointments tonight is Liz Davis. She is the Ward 3 appointee to the Parks and Recreation Board. She is tireless. She also serves as the mayor's appointee to the Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board. She is a former Smyrna Citizen of the Year. She did not get a sash and a crown for that, but she may as well have because she is the queen of Williams Park. She is a wonderful, tireless citizen, and I am so grateful that she wants to continue to serve. This is an appointment for a term that will expire in 2015. I would like to move to approve item 6G, 2013-454, approval of the Ward 3 reappointment to Parks and Recreation Board. This is Liz Davis of Roswell Street for a term to expire December 31, 2015.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved, 7-0. Approval of Ward 4 reappointment to Parks and Recreation Board, Paula Weeks. Mr. Corky Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I contacted Paula about that, I asked Mr. Siatchio if he thought that Ms. Weeks would like to serve on this board again. And he said, the only way that he thought I could get her off of it was to pry her off of it with a crowbar, so. And I contacted Ms. Weeks. She's very happy to serve again. At this point, I'd like to move to reappoint Ms. Paula Weeks to the Parks and Recreation Board, term to expire 12/31/2015.
Second.
Motion second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved, 7-0. Approval of Ward 6 reappointment to Planning and Zoning Board, Denny Campo. Term to expire 12/31/2015. Mr. Lenika.
Thank you, Your Honor. Denny Campo has served admirably and well, representing Ward 6, and has agreed to serve another term. So it's my honor to move to, on item 2013-443, to approve the reappointment of Denny Campo to the Planning and Zoning Board with a term to expire 12/31/2015.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. 7-0. Approval of Ward 6 reappointment to Parks and Recreation Board, Julia Morini. Term to expire 12/31/2015. Mr. Lenika.
Again, thank you, Your Honor. Julia Morini has served the citizens of Ward 6 and the city well on the Parks and Recreation Board. With her, it's really kind of buy one, get one free. Your husband, Steve, has also been very active and helpful to me and the city. It's my pleasure to reappoint, to move approval of item 213-444, reappoint to the Parks and Recreation Board, Julia Morini, with a term to expire 12/31/2015.
Have a motion and a second to reappoint Ms. Morini to the Parks and Recreation Board. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, 7-0. Thank you very much. And thanks to all those volunteers and folks that give back to their community. Most of these are non-paying boards. I think the only one that might pay is the Planning and Zoning Boards. Thank y'all very much. Item K is approval to hire Paige Day as the Fire Chief announced November 27, 2013. Mr. Taylor, the background, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Per state law, we announced the sole finalist for our next Fire Chief back on November 27, 2013. That candidate was announced as Paige Day. Paige is currently serving as the Assistant Fire Chief with the Missouri City, Texas, and she's been there since 2011. She was selected from a pool of 50 candidates. A group of 14 were given consideration, of which five were selected to go through an assessment process and interview panel. Paige is scheduled to begin work, if approved, on Monday, January 6, 2014. But I will let everybody know that she is here tonight with her daughter Kelly and her husband Mark, and so.
I think we need to get her to come down with your family. Don't be afraid.
So I'm happy to recommend that City Council approve Paige Day as the next Fire Chief for the city of Smyrna.
This is under Mr. Fennel's purview as the chairman of the public safety. You're shorter than your wife.
Yes.
Mr. Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it gives me great pleasure to bring to you this candidate for our consideration. And I'm going to take a moment, if you don't mind, and just have a brief opening statement, and then we want to welcome you to Smyrna in a formal way. The candidate we selected after the rigorous process that was articulated, it was not an easy process. Those five who went through, I can say, the city should be proud that we drew upon the nation's talent for available potential fire chiefs, and we had five stellar candidates in the final group. They represent what we want Smyrna to be about. We had one local candidate. I was proud of our local candidate in the race, did very well. We had four with master's degrees in this group that we attracted from around the country. Says something about Smyrna and about this particular position. But the candidate we selected, Paige Day, is unique, and we believe will quickly become a part of the fabric of our community. She decided to become a firefighter and a paramedic, sort of after a personal awakening of sorts, and tackled it with the dedication that's nothing short of impressive. Let me just give you some data points. In a 10-year span, she earned two associate degrees, one in fire science, one in paramedicine, a bachelor of science in public safety administration, a master of science degree in executive fire service leadership. She has already completed her coursework toward her doctorate in organizational leadership with a dissertation, the remaining piece of that puzzle, which she plans to complete in 2014. And you say, how can she do that with a new job? She did all this with a lot of other stuff going on in life. On the personal note, her husband, Mark, is here with her and her beautiful daughter. But she has two sons as well, both serving their country in the United States military. We're proud of that, and we thank Cody and Taylor for their service as well. The daughter's going to be a, she is a junior right now. She wants to finish her high school career at Campbell High School. So I think that was a great choice in and of itself. So thank you for that, and we're welcoming you to town, I hope, on a great basis at that school as well. On an even more personal note, her family experienced a tragic event that changed all of their lives. We're very fortunate to have all of the family together here today, but Paige took time to write an account of what happened to their family. And I hope that as leaders in our community, that we understand when somebody is challenged with adversity and they still endure, they succeed, they grow, they persevere, and then they take the next level, that's a demonstrated leadership. This book is a testament to how one person's cathartic moment is evidenced in writing, and I'm proud of your courage to write this book and tell your story and to be involved in the solutions that traumatic brain injury can be helped over time with proper research and support. And you'll find a lot of people in the metro Atlanta area who'll welcome you with open arms into that community. Thank you for that. She's been able to be a leader, driven personally and professionally during all of this process. And let me just say, you're coming into a great fire department. We have some outstanding men and a woman in our department who are terrific professionals, paramedics, emergency management professionals, firefighters, and just great people. You already have seen that a little bit, but you'll learn more and more. We have one of the best departments in the state, if not the country. I know that only 16 other departments have an ISO rating of two in the state. That's as high as anybody gets, and it's among the best in the nation, in the upper echelon. We're proud of that, and we know you're going to take us to another level. And our understanding of your commitment to do that is paramount. Over 70% are paramedic trained. We respond to about that many medical calls as a percentage. We have the new fire medic program. Those vehicles are helping us to respond in a more efficient, more cost-effective, and a more rapid pace, and we believe that's important. We provide CPR training, car seat inspection, smoke detector inspection and installation, emergency management preparedness training, and much, much more. Leaving, get your daughter's cat out of a tree if need be, right, guys? So, yeah, we provide a lot of other things too, like building inspections. We investigate arson's, the rare cases where they are out there. Oh, and occasionally, they put out fires. You know, it's really impressive what our team does. These men and women are walking heroes, and I'm proud to be affiliated and associated with the public safety professionals that we have in Smyrna, and we welcome you to our team. Welcome, Paige Day.
You want to let her say something?
Yes, please.
Well, wow, thank you for that kind introduction. I'm humbled to be here before you. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, citizens, fellow firefighters. I have friends from local fire districts here as well to support and represent and get to know each other, because this is all about relationships, partnerships, and family, which is why I have part of my family here today. I'm very excited for this opportunity. I couldn't be more honored to be here before you this evening. My family, my firefighter family, and now my Smyrna family, we are going to accomplish wonderful things in this community, and I appreciate your support.
You like your husband's mustache?
You like that? He's a retired fire captain. He's earned the mustache.
I know that Ron's going to make a motion to.
So from a formal perspective, I want to complete the loop here. I move that the City Council approve item number 2013-445, approval to hire Paige Day as Fire Chief to the city of Smyrna.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, 7-0. You're in.
He's there.
I just want to say this. We welcome you. I see there's a number of members of the Smyrna Fire Department in the back. Glad to see y'all. I guess the other guys in the other blue are from.
DeKalb and.
DeKalb, yeah. I do want to take just a minute to thank Acting Chief Rory Akry for the outstanding job he did during the interim. He's our assistant chief, and he's a good man, and he helped build the department of what it's at. So I think you're going to enjoy working with him, and.
I look forward to it.
He very much wanted the job, you know? But we welcome you as part of our family, so. Any other comments? January 6?
I'll be here.
Good deal. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
A is approval. Pardon me? Yeah, approval of modifications to defined benefit. I'm right there, so I got my finger on. Defined benefit plan and authorize the mayor to sign and execute any related documents. Mr. Taylor, the background.
Mr. Mayor, this particular item is to adopt proposed modifications to our defined benefit plan. These changes include three different items. Number one is the inclusion of all elected officials, current and future, in the defined benefit plan with same contribution and benefit structure as in the 1999 defined benefit plan. Item two is to reduce divesting period for elected officials from seven years to four years. And item three is to reduce divesting to five years for city of Smyrna staff and pay grades 24 and higher in the 1999 and 2010 plans. We do recommend approval.
This is Mr. Lenika.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city administrator has kind of outlined the gist of the changes. It's fairly straightforward. I'm going to move approval of item 2013-082, modifications to the defined benefit plans and authorize the mayor to sign and execute any related documents.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? That's approved, 5 to 2. Can't tell who. 5 to 2. It's approved, 5 to 2. Item seven is commercial building permits. Ms. Prichard, Ms. Nullwich oppose that. Item seven is commercial building permits. We have none. Item eight is consent agenda. Mr. Taylor, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
Certainly, Your Honor. We have three items on the consent agenda this evening. Item A is the approval of December 2, 2013, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B is to award RFP 14-014. It's for the Powder Spring Street sewer rehabilitation. This is going to the second lowest bidder, Inland Waters Pollution Incorporated, as the lowest bidder bid an alternate curing method that the city does not historically use and did not submit to CDBG certification forms, and also authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. And item C is to award RFP 14-011 for street resurfacing projects to the lowest bidder, CW Matthews Contracting Company, for $1,183,286.76, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents.
Your motion, we approve the consent agenda.
We're moved.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved, 7-0. Item nine is committee reports. We'll start tonight with, start with Mr. Ron Fennel. He's.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Lee is back there somewhere. Had a good weekend. I think they had 38 arrests, 10 for DUI. So keep up the good work. Get the bad guys out of the street. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Couple of things I wanted to go through tonight. We've hired three new recruits so far this month, recruit officers Elliot, Griffin, and Tucker, that will all be starting the Police Academy in January of 2014. For Mr. Councilman Lenika, he'll be happy to know, one of those is a former airborne ranger. So we try and hire the vets as often as we can.
Try to get him up early.
We've also hired one new jailer, and he's already started his training process. We're real happy with him, and I think we'll probably see him applying for the police department as a police officer. But, you know, when I interviewed him, he said that's what his goal was. I said, well, talk to me in a year at least, get a little bit of activity out of him. Our upcoming citizens Police Academy, we had to push the starting date forward. Originally, we were starting in January due to some scheduling conflicts. Now, the first date of it will be February 12. So there's still openings. People can go through the HR department for their application process. Our DUI task force, you know, we started that back in March, and to this date, they've made 301 DUI arrests, and those are two officers. So as soon as we get a few more of these officers hired and trained, we're going to be adding additional officers to that unit.
David, while you're talking, I don't mean to interrupt. Tell me, I see a lot of Georgia State Patrol that's been patrolling Spring Road and wherever else they say, Wendy Hill. They've been all over the place, which is.
Yes, sir. The State Patrol approximately eight, nine months ago added 30 new troopers to their Cobb County post. Primarily, they work the interstates. They've taken away, working the traffic accidents from like Marietta and Cobb County, so they've kind of freed those up. But when they're off to the interstates, they do come and patrol inside the cities. Believe it or not, the State Patrol is trying to take initiative towards community-oriented policing, which on a state level, you know, that's a little bit more difficult to do than when you're working in a municipality. than when you're working in a municipality. So, there, you know, you're going to see them everywhere.
Oh, yeah. I've had people... I assume that they got a ticket, because I've had some complaints.
Yeah, I've had to talk to one or two people as well.
But I'll tell you this, I mean, everyone that I've talked to that has been given a citation always says this, that the State Patrol, they're so professional, they're courteous, and they, you know, the guy was nice, and, you know, and if... They just sort of set the bar, I think, for law enforcement.
They've changed a whole lot since when I started back in the early 80s. It's, you know, they've really come along. Their training has gotten a lot better. Believe it or not, back in the 80s, their training was, they didn't receive as much training as what we did locally. And, you know, a lot of people felt that, you know, they just assumed since they were state police, they had more training, and in all actuality, they really didn't. But they've really come along, and like I said, they're very professional and super guys, just really willing to help. And I don't know if you noticed, even during the beginning of the school year, you've probably seen them driving through the school parking lots as well.
Chief, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What happens to the tickets they write in Smyrna?
If they're in Smyrna, they come to our court. They're provided court dates, and so they... Comes to our court, revenue comes to our court.
Okay, so the Georgia State Patrol turns the tickets into our court services?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And I assure you, they like working in our court system a lot better. I'll just say that.
Okay, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's fine. I was pretty much done. The only other thing I wanted to say, I wanted to welcome Paige, and I look forward to working with you. And like myself, we both have juniors at Campbell High School, and we've added some beauty to the school. We both have young ladies who are going to be breaking hearts there, so... But I'm real excited.
Probably already broken a few hearts.
I'm sure, yes. But with that, any questions?
Any questions?
Chief, I just look forward to meeting your new recruit with the Ranger background. In my 26 years of service, he's only the other, the one only person that's ever been employed here with that background, so...
Well, I tried to get military policeman. Little partial.
Keep your guys safe.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And Chief, thank you for agreeing to be a part of Team Georgia, our statewide sober driving and boating coalition, and your DUI Task Force for the past several months are testament to how it can be done and done properly and done effectively. So, thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
And now, representing the Fire Department, Deputy Acting Chief Farmer, Eric Farmer. Again, I want to reiterate how important Rory Akry has been to our department over the years, and we thank him for his service as Acting Chief in this interim, and he will be until January 6th. He is our Deputy Chief. We're going to continue to draw upon his wisdom, his talents, his energy, and his love for the City of Smyrna. We appreciate his service and his ongoing commitment to Smyrna. He is a valued member of our city team. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, as a representative of the Fire Department, we do want to welcome Chief Day and your family to the city. We're excited about getting started. I've been asked to talk a little bit about fire safety during the holidays. May seem a little mundane, but it is. There's some hidden hazards that can happen. First thing I want to talk about is Christmas trees. With the Christmas trees, you've got to be careful. Don't block any exits. The fact is that, you know, you may find that perfect spot, but it could pose a danger if you're trying to get out of the house. We also ask after the holidays that we get rid of Christmas trees, since they do pose a hazard with a hidden fire load. Holiday lights, too, we ask that they're, you look at them and make sure they're UL-approved. These lights, too, can... Make sure we're using the outdoor lights for outdoor use, and indoor lights stay indoors. Also, if they're worn, the holiday lights, we ask them that you discard them. Same thing with fireplace safety. You know, we ask that, we always recommend annual safety checks for your fireplaces. Have a reputable person come out and inspect them, do a nice clean on it. Smoke detectors, too, we also recommend, of course, twice a year, we check smoke detectors. We also get the smoke detectors, make sure the barriers are working. You know, those simple tips can really make a difference. That's really all I've got. Any questions?
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just remind everybody during these holidays to take extra precaution to be safe. Even the dynamic duo of Delight back here is going to be in the Police Academy upcoming. Every one of us has a responsibility to be a part of our community, of making it safer. And if you see somebody who might either be impaired or headed toward impairment, please help them, find an alternative way to get home and to avoid getting a drunk driver on the roads. And I hope you and your family have a safe and sober holiday, and that you enjoy the season with your family. And let's thank the public safety professionals, as we encounter them every day, who protect us 24/7/365. With that, Mr. Mayor, I conclude my report.
Mr. Wade Lenica.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, too, want to welcome Chief Day to the City of Smyrna and her family, and look forward to working with you and getting to know your family. And as Councilman Fennel has said, certainly appreciate the service of your two sons to the U.S. Military, and wish them to be safe. For all Smyrna citizens, the holidays are a joyous time, but it is a potential time where we can lose track of where we ought to be or what we should be doing, and fall victim to various circumstances that can make the holidays not so joyous. I just want to encourage everyone to be safe, to follow safe procedures. We heard from the Fire Department about Christmas lights and trees, and, you know, they're great, but we need them to be safe. We want everybody to be safe. I've enjoyed attending in the last couple of weeks a number of holiday get-togethers in various neighborhoods in Ward 6. I appreciate all those invitations and the chance to meet and talk to citizens one-on-one and in small groups in a very informal setting. And as I finish what's now, for me, my 26-year of elected service, I'm still proud to be able to represent the City of Smyrna and to get up every day and, in the course of the day, try to do something to help someone, somewhere. Doesn't necessarily have to be in the City of Smyrna, but I think each of us in our lives have the opportunity to help others, and we all have gifts that were given from our Lord. We all can use those gifts in good ways or bad ways, and the holidays is certainly a time to be reflective of the things that we can do to help people, to be meaningful in our community, and to leave the world a better place. I wish everyone the best for the holiday season and look forward to seeing you next year. With that, I yield.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I'd like to thank the staff of the Parks and Recreation and also the staff of Public Works for the wonderful job they've done decorating the downtown and the community center and around the pond. And I believe the Parks staff also decorated Bronner Hall, and so I just want to give a big thank you to those and how hard they've worked, and it looks really beautiful. And Steve might be able to answer this for me, but I think they also replaced all the lights with LED lights. I think I heard that this time.
Now, we need to replace...
He might be more illuminated by our, my good friend at Public Works, he did the lighting. Scott, was that LEDs that you put up there?
These LED, and I've never liked it. I was just too blue.
But anyway, they look really beautiful, so... And now Steve's going to give us our report for the Parks Department. Thank you.
Mr. Lenica, speaking of giving, folks have an opportunity to give this upcoming Friday, December 20. Between 5:00 and 8:00 p.m., will be the Christmas at Bronner, Taylor Bronner Park, which is home to Food Truck Tuesday, if you don't know where you are when you're at Food Truck Tuesday. Taylor Bronner Park is at 3180 Atlanta Road. At that event, we're going to have a coat drive. So, for the meager entry fee of a new or gently-used coat in all sizes, we'll give you professional and high-quality amateur caroling, a candy cane hunt, hayride, pictures with Santa, carnival games, crafts, and more. So, that's from 5:00 to 8:00. If you can just pop in and give us a coat, and we'll make that happen in somebody's lives. We'll give it to an entity in the community that will represent those needy people. So, come by and have some fun. Taylor Bronner Park, 3180 Atlanta Road, 5:00 to 8:00 this upcoming Friday evening.
What about the Santa House? The Santa House?
Santa House is over at the Welcome Center, AKA Aunt Fanny's Cabin. There are signs all over the downtown about what those hours are, principally Friday evenings, Saturday evenings, and on Sundays as well. Santa Claus is over there, and if you missed him at the Coming Home for the Holidays, or you'll miss him this upcoming Friday, he almost lives at the house, up to the point where he leaves the North Pole a week or so.
Lights look good.
Thank you. That's Scott's doing more than my staff. We handle the inside. He does all the pop outside. He's asleep. Well, he's been working hard. Thank you.
Steve, may I ask you a question? Is that coat drive, is that on the city's website?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And I didn't know that there were two Santas involved in the decorations, but you guys did a great job.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. And I'd like to ask Mary Moore to come and give us a report for the library. And while she's walking up here, I also want to take this moment to thank Chief Day and her family, and welcome them to Smyrna.
Hi, I just have a couple of events I'd like to highlight coming up in January. The Friends of Smyrna Library First Sunday Lecture will feature Wayne Waldrop. He's a local history researcher, and he'll be discussing the history of Old Peachtree Road. That road was created during the War of 1812 to connect Fort Peachtree with Fort Daniel. So, he'll be talking about the research, both archaeological and historical, that he's done on that area. That lecture is Sunday, January 5th, at 3:00, in the meeting room at Smyrna Library. I also wanted to mention a new program that our youth services team is starting for January is the Lego Club. On the second Tuesday of each month, we'll have an event at 4:00 for kids aged 5 to 10. We provide the bricks and the inspiration, and the kids will create a different Lego design each month. If you bring your little ones that are four and under, we'll also have Duplo blocks for them. If your family happens to have old Legos and Duplos you're not using anymore, we'd really love the donations, because we need more bricks. And so, our first build is Tuesday, January 14 at 4:00 p.m. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to call him Ms. Ann Kirk for this evening. While Ann's coming up, I'd like to say I had the honor and the privilege of working with Santa this past Friday evening, and he is a, he does a great job with the children, so please do come out. It's a lot of fun, and the children had a great time, so please come out and see Santa.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome Ms. Castleberry as a new member of the Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Board, and also the reappointment of her mother, Betty Williams, to our board. I look forward to working with them, as well as new Chief Day. We will have our Bring One for the Chipper. If you bought a live tree this year, you may recycle it at the Home Depot on January the 4th from 9:00 until 4:00, and we will have free seedlings to pass out. We'll have dogwoods and red buds, and these are fairly good-sized trees that you, they're bare-rooted, they're easy to plant, and we have them all over the old recycling center. They've done very, very well there. In 10 years, these trees have gotten to be huge. So, we hope that you'll come out and spare our sanitation department from having to pick these up on the side of the curb. Also, please remove all lights. You would think this would be obvious, but we get trees every year with lights all over them. You can recycle your old lights at the recycling center. We would love to have them, but we cannot chip a tree with lights and wire in it, nor can we chip wreaths and garland. So, please just throw those away. We can't take them at the Bring One for the Chipper event. Free chips will be available by the truckload, and you may call our office to arrange for pickup for those. Our community garden plots are being renewed this time of year, so if you're interested in a plot, that would make a great Christmas gift for your family. Also, we have jonkle bulbs available at the recycling center, and they're $15 for a bag of 50. So, come in if you want to buy multiple bags. We may cut you a deal on those. We want to thank all of our board members, volunteers, and supporters for all their help this year. We've had a great year, and we look forward to working with all of you next year, and everyone have a safe and happy holiday. Thank you.
Thank you.
And don't forget, if you fry your turkey, to take your oil to the recycle center. I think Scott Stokes said he did not have a report this evening.
Yeah, he does.
I guess he does. He sure does. He wears his Grinch tie one time a year, but he is a Grinch, 365.
He's got his Christmas tie.
Let me defend myself on the lights.
The lights, uh...
The trees.
The trees.
Not the Christmas tree, but the trees all have new LEDs in them.
If I had my way about it...
Blue tree is yours. The blue tree is scheduled this coming fiscal year to be relit with whiter lights.
Good.
The new LEDs are white, so that's the old style. The recycled cooking oil, this past Thanksgiving, we collected approximately 250 gallons of that, so...
Oh, great.
And again, you know, take it to the recycling center, put it at the curb. We'll pick it up every one, or every recycling day. Our Campbell Road widening project is running along on schedule. Contractor indicates that hopefully by 5:00 tomorrow, he'll have that additional lane westbound open. If not, I'm working till...
Did you say Campbell Road or Concord Road?
I say Concord Road, maybe. Concord Road.
I missed that.
Westbound, but I'm working all the way up to this Friday for sure, and if it's not, I'm going to make sure it's open. So, they promised us by 5:00 tomorrow that the second westbound lane will be open. CW Matthews has the contract. They usually take two weeks off a year during Christmas, so they're going to take the week of Christmas off, and they'll probably be back on site till January 6th. So, there won't be an activity through the holiday on that roadway. Our Ward Street project is, contractor informed us today, he's finished with all the storm drainage work associated with the roadway, and they're going to start pulling all the curb and sidewalk in front of Campbell High School this week, and then backfilling that with GAB, so they can prep for their, for the curbs, for the new curbs for the roadway. Our Atlanta Road median project, we're doing that project in two phases. Phase one is underway now. All the curb work is in on phase one in the median. All the GAB is being removed on the third median, and screen topsoil being placed back in for planting later. Campbell Road, we've got a curb project on Campbell Road. That one's a little slow. We've had to take down several trees due to the, due to their problems with the trees and with the curb work. That project's probably about 60% complete. Kathy Lane, got a box culvert, culvert's in. The roadway is back open. You're running on gravel temporarily until the upstream headwalls are built. Footings have been poured, and I think the contractor is this week working on putting the upstream headwalls in, wingwalls in. Contractor indicates that January 19th, they should be finished with that project. The Reed Road Drainage Project is about 95% complete. It, the contractor's currently spraying the inside of that pipe with cementous material to stiffen the pipe up. That's kind of relining the inside of the old pipe. That was part of the major part of the project, but there again, it's the spraying. I should have finished spraying all this week, and then the only thing left would be the guardrail for the roadway, and that was, that project will be complete. And last is our Anne Road Storm Drain Project. It's about 55, 60% complete. Contractor's installing some rock headwalls. Once all that's in, he'll have to repave the road where he had to cut through the road and re-landscape the yards. And that's it.
Questions of Scott? What about the Christmas pickup schedule?
Christmas pickup, Monday, Monday, there's really no change. Since Christmas falls on Wednesday, we'll work half a day Tuesday, so there's no change other than no yard waste or no large item pickups, and it'll be the same for New Year's.
New Year's.
There's no change in anyone's schedule.
All right, good deal. Any questions? With that, Mr. Mayor, I yield. Ms. Taryn Nolowicz.
I would like to invite Ms. Jennifer Bennett up from Community Relations to talk about what is going to be happening in the city going on into 2014.
All right, thank you. First, I want to welcome Paige Day to the team. Welcome. December 31st, we all know it is New Year's Eve. Well, in Smyrna, it's also New Year's Eve with Radio Disney. It's the opportunity for you to ring in the New Year with your... Radio Disney. It's the opportunity for you to ring in the New Year with your kids. It's a huge dance party with Radio Disney. We get started at 10:30 and go until 12:30, where we have a huge balloon drop. So I look forward to seeing you there. You can find the information on the city website, smyrnacity.com. We also roll it out on our Facebook page, which you can access off of smyrnacity.com if you're not already following. You can also find things like the sanitation schedule and the holiday closing schedule on the city website. We also roll that on the Facebook feed, so you'll be able to keep up with what's going on. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Tony Joe Howard from Finance, if you would like to come and give your report, that would be fantastic. You look very festive this evening.
I just wanted to give a quick update as we have passed the due date for our property tax filling. We did actually have a 97% rate of payments, so that's good news for us. For those people that haven't paid yet, hopefully within the next month, we will have the online payment option up and running, so people will be able to utilize that. For our vendors, please make sure that you look for some mail that will ask for some information. We're trying to update our vendor records to make sure that we have all the necessary pieces of information for some of the reporting requirements that we have for different state agencies. So we will be sending that out and getting that updated. And they will be able to also log into the website to provide that information for us. So it's going to be centralized through our new software package. So just things for people to look out for. Any questions?
Thank you. I again want to thank all the men and women who are willing to serve the city through their service on various parks, various boards and commissions. It's a commitment of time and energy, and we are all the better for it. And I am very grateful. I want to again thank Larry Jones for his years of service to the city. He was appointed to the P&amp;Z Board in May of 2004. And, you know, having shared his time and talent for nearly a decade, we are so grateful for that. I'd also like to welcome Chief Day to the city. She is a tremendously impressive firefighter. I've enjoyed getting to know her so far. I know she's going to be an asset to the community. I'd like to welcome her and her family to Smyrna. And also to thank Chief Lee for everything that he has done for the city, both in his capacity as, I'm sorry, Chief Lee. Chief Lee, you're awesome. But I'm actually talking about Chief Agri, and who has served the city so well for many, many years, and I know will continue to be a tremendous part of the team here in the city. Welcome to Smyrna, Chief Day. I hope everyone has a fantastic holiday season. We are in the middle of the season. I hope everyone enjoys the joy that is inherent to this time of year. For updates regarding Ward 3, please don't hesitate to visit my Facebook page. That is facebook.com/teriward3, T-E-R-I, one R and an I, Ward 3. If you do not receive my periodic email updates, you can send me a message or an email, and I will gladly add you to my list. And with that, I yield.
Ms. Andrea Bleisting.
I think Mr. Sudrith has a short report for us here.
Yes, I do. It's all positive news, as it has been the entire year. Just to give you a couple of figures, even though we still have more or less another 10 days in this year, we've already surpassed calendar 2012 in terms of new, new family unit permits, which would be townhomes or single-family. Last year, we had 203 in the calendar year. This year, we have 218. I do anticipate a couple more coming in before the end of the year. In terms of what we have generated so far in money, we, because of these increases, we've actually hit probably three-quarters of my projection for the revenue in six months as opposed to nine months. So we are running ahead of that. One of those reasons is although they're not under construction, so I have not put them in this report, they have picked up their permits. And the old Regency Square Apartments, which we did annex in, has come in for the demolition permits, which we have mentioned to you in our weekly reports. But they've also come in for all of their apartment unit permits, which is 318 units. So the money associated with that has hit our books. But I've not put that unit total in because they're not under construction at the moment with that. So it's all good news. Obviously, there's still other projects out there. And we are, as I've stated many times in the last couple of months, we actually are out of lots. We are getting requests now for new rezonings and the creation of new lots. And as you heard in the Belmont TAD discussion with Mr. Halpern, they do have a residential builder lined up for one of those pods, which coincidentally, I have a meeting with in the morning. I'd like to welcome our newest staff member, Ms. Day to Smyrna as well. I know the community department and at least part of her department of fire marshals, we actually not only share the same building, but the one end of the same hall. They're on one end and we're on the other. And finally, I'd like to welcome back Dale Holmes, as well as Danny Campbell, to our Planning Commission for being reappointed. And then to echo Terry's welcome of Steve Kemp. I also want to thank Larry as well. He has been here ever since I've been here. I've been here, it'll be seven years after the first of the year. So I've worked with Larry all that time. Been a very good Planning Commission member, and I wish him well. And I welcome Steve Kemp aboard. With that, I'm done.
Well, thank you very much. And I know that you probably are looking forward to some quiet time during the holidays. All of a sudden, your department has gotten really busy.
I've been looking forward to two Mondays without meetings.
Exactly. This evening, I had the pleasure of attending the Mosaic at Vining's, their HOA meeting. And it was nice to see all of them. And they were quite interested about what's going on in the downtown area and whatever. And so I do hope that they enjoyed what I had to tell them. I would like to welcome Chief Day to the city and her family. God, it's hard for, I'm sure, her daughter to uproot herself at this point. But I think you'll like Smyrna if you'll give us a chance. For those of you in Ward 2 that would like to receive my, and I mean seriously, periodic news updates, if you'll go onto my website, smyrnaward2, there's a section where you can sign up. And I'd love to have you as a part of my email list. I would like to wish everyone a very happy holiday and a happy New, happy and safe New Year. And I can't wait to the coat drive on the 20th, this Friday, from 5:00 to 8:00. So thank you very much. With that, I yield.
Ms. Melanie Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to welcome Chief Day and her family. And I look forward to working with you come January. I hope you all have a wonderful holiday. I'm also wanting to give credit to Kristi Almond, who is the Executive Assistant to the Mayor and Council. And she did all these wonderful decorations. So I wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that. Also, I want to thank all of our staff and all of our employees for what a great job you all have done this year. So have a wonderful holiday, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year to all. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Eric Taylor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I've had quite a few questions about some of the work that's going on in the downtown area, particularly with some of the road closings that are happening on a periodic basis. And what that is, is the buildings, particularly the two in the middle where the residential properties are, they're approaching 10, 12 years old, and they're starting to show a little bit of wear and tear in terms of rotten wood and needing some painting and things like that. And so this work is being done by the building owners and the homeowners association. Because of the number of windows and the type of equipment they're needing to use, they do require periodic road closings. And they're trying to limit the impact that it's having on traffic. And this was originally supposed to be about a 30-day project, but because of the weather and other delays that have happened, you know, obviously, this is something that's getting dragged out a little bit longer. But we do hope that this does not inconvenience folks any more than it has to. I want to thank all of the firefighters who showed up tonight to support Chief Day. I know that some have left, and some are still here. I think that that is further indication of the type of fire department that we have. And I really look forward to working with Chief Day as she comes in on January the 2nd, and January 6th, I'm sorry, and further advancing, you know, one of the top fire departments in the state and the country, taking it to the next level. And with that, I wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and Happy New Year.
It's Scott Cochran, I'm City Attorney.
I don't really have anything to say, other than I welcome Chief Day. Also, I look forward to working with you. And that's all I've got.
Okay. Ms. Terry Graham, City Clerk. Good note, Paul. All right. We do not have show call hearings. We've got three people signed up for citizen input. Alec Bakary, 34, 59 Shawnee Trail comments.
My comments tonight is on the citizens' input. Listening to the city attorney do a dissertation on that, it's a privilege for people to come up and speak in citizens' input. I don't see it as that. I see it as an obligation that we have for fair and balanced government. Many other municipalities have it. Even Cobb County has a waiting line over there, and they give them five minutes. Now, when they, the previous council blacked out citizens' input, and to this day, I still don't believe it happened. That was such an injustice to open government. And when I saw our council person after they had that vote, I says, "How come you voted against, for blacking it out?" He says, "Times change." I says, "Since when has open government changed?" It doesn't. Even former Governor Roy Barnes said, "It's like a seesaw. You have to have a person on each end to balance the seesaw." So I hope that citizens' input continues. And Mayor, if you have comments for somebody that you feel is wrong, you should say it while they're up here and make your point. And they can then look into something, rather than wait till they leave. These comments that are, these disparaging comments, like in the past of calling people liars or idiots, and in a previous meeting, calling a person sick, this has to stop in the New Year. This is unprofessional, and I feel it reflects on the whole council. We don't do it, and we respect the opinions on both sides. And I hope that in the New Year, citizens' input stays where it is. And we bring up issues, because when they voted against that last time, it's obvious some people feel they don't want things to be heard, other than from the council itself only. That's unacceptable. So I hope it stays in an open government and citizens' input. And the people that come up here all chip in to pay your salaries. They should be treated with respect, whether you agree or disagree. And again, make your point while someone's up there, instead of when they can't come back up. It's more appropriate that way. Thank you.
Mike McNabb, 750 Austin Drive, Outstanding Civics.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, council members. In a departure from the last speaker, I'd like to draw a little bit different emphasis. I thought two weeks ago on Monday night was an outstanding moment in Smyrna government, because the Jonquil hearing presented an absolutely exemplary case of citizens coming forward, prepared and articulating in a positive way what was appropriate for their community. It was an outstanding example of citizen engagement, and something that I thought the council did a wonderful job with. It refutes the charge that all decisions are foregone or a conclusion. We heard a council person's acknowledged that, as happens many times with people, your opinion changes as you hear input from citizens and from others. That's not a rare occurrence. It was a wonderful thing. Unfortunately, as Councilman Lenika pointed out, it was a split decision by the council. But out of split decisions and out of conflict, some of the best things in Smyrna have happened. The Forest Hills Neighborhood Association grew out of zoning conflict over Collier Gate. Williams Park Neighborhood grew out of zoning conflicts, people feeling that they were under siege. Smyrna Heights Neighborhood grew out of that. All three of those neighborhoods had wonderful speakers that came forward and articulated pro and con for that. Most of you know my wonderful wife, Carleen. She's taught me a lot of lessons while we've been married. Some of them she's taught me multiple times. But one she's always done, that I think will apply us here, is she's always said, "When things don't go our way, let's take those lemons and make lemonade." So in that spirit, I would like to suggest, for council's consideration, that you make lemonade out of this citizen input. First of all, I'd like to say is, first, let's educate. That was civics with a capital C, Monday night, two weeks ago. It was civics with civility. Speakers were informed and articulate and passionate, advocating for what they thought was best for the community. They did not denigrate one another. They did not call into question the motives of the people of this council or the developer. I think that we ought to edit a copy of the CD and hand a copy to every social studies teacher in the city of Smyrna as a contemporary example of how civics can be conducted in a positive way. Politics does work. There is an appropriate way to advocate your position. Number two, I think we ought to inform. And that is, I would suggest that we have a policy that is adopted that, at least for the downtown corridor, and we might want to think about expanding it to the limited cities project area, that if there's a zoning or a variance hearing, that we have a town hall meeting, not to discuss or debate that, but to simply get firsthand information from those presenting. And third, and finally, I think that we ought to clarify. Mr. Sal has pointed out that our mixed-use guidelines were unspecific. I think this is an opportunity to add some clarity to those, at least for what we call mixed-use projects in the downtown area. Mr. Mayor, you yourself have said numerous times, they're not making any more real estate in Smyrna. And that's very true. So to that point, I think that we ought to have a community dialogue, and the council ought to look at establishing some guidelines about what we mean by mixed-use, at least in the downtown area. Not to be rigid, not to be rigidly enforced, but simply as guidance to people coming forward for development. So to summarize, let's educate, let's inform, and let's clarify. Thank you for hearing me out. And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to personally wish you a very semanticious Christmas.
Mike McNabb, served on the council for eight years, and he would make these words up, but they just were not words. Good to see you, Mike. Larissa Edwards, 304 Hickory Springs Drive, City Support Council.
Good evening. It's nice to see everyone. I'd like to thank you, Mayor, for having a town hall meeting. You didn't fall out or pass out. So, you know, it wasn't so bad, was it?
No.
No. The city council surprised me. I'm not going to lie. I thought you guys were going to vote against the city. And so I'd like to thank you, because the voice of the people was heard and acknowledged, and that's important. And there were a couple of people that, you know, voted against the city. And that was a little confusing to me, you know? I was just wondering if you would have a comment on why you voted against the city, those people who did. Only because one day, you know, someone's going to ask you, "Hey, Terry," or "Miss Pritchett," or "Mr. Fennell," you know, "What do you choose, right or not right?" And you notice I say these things a lot. And sometimes it's gray. The area of right and not right is kind of gray. But the numbers spoke that night, that evening that we're speaking of on the second. And I thought it was really awesome for you guys to stand up for what you thought was right. And I have a suggestion. I noticed that the police and the fire department have committees with the citizens. And I think... I noticed that the police and the fire department have committees with the citizens, and I think it would be beneficial if the city of Smyrna had a committee with the city, because there's a lot of business people in the city that may benefit the city council in the future of the city of Smyrna. And I want you guys to have a wonderful holiday, and again, thank you.
That's our final speaker. Merry Christmas to everyone. It is now 9:03, 4:00. Have a safe holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we are adjourned now.